Madam Mayor, counting down. Nine, eight, two, and one.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of October 3, 2024, to order at 7:41 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
I'm here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Lentz?
Here.
Councilmember Mackin?
Here.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Here. Thank you. Can I get a first and a second to adopt the agenda as it stands?
So moved.
Second?
Thank you. And a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye. Thank you. That'll move us to awards and presentations. And we are declaring October 6 through 11, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of Brisbane and the North County Fire Authority are committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Brisbane, and whereas, according to the National Fire Protection Association, at home, the place people feel safest from fire is where they are at the greatest risk. And whereas having working smoke alarms in the home reduces the risk of dying in a home fire burned by more than half, and more than one-third of home fire deaths result from fires in which no smoke alarms are present. And whereas smoke alarms should be in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area, on each level, including basements and attics of the home, and meet the needs of all family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas testing smoke alarms should be conducted once a month by pushing the test button and replacing smoke alarms when they are 10 years old or don't respond when tested. Whereas North County Fire Authority first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection and education. And whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Smoke Alarms: Make Them Work For You", reinforces the importance of keeping working smoke alarms within the home. Therefore, I, Terry O'Connell, Mayor of Brisbane, proclaim October 6 through 12, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city. I urge all the people of Brisbane to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and support the many public safety activities and efforts of North County Fire Authority and emergency services during Fire Prevention Week 2024. Accepting the proclamation is North County Fire Authority. If you'd like to come up. That's for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if you'd like to say a few words.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you so much for declaring Fire Prevention Week here in the City of Brisbane on behalf of the entire North County Fire Authority. Obviously, we have a very busy month ahead of us. Our firefighters will be going out to all the schools, visiting the schoolchildren, and teaching them about fire safety, as we usually do. And we will be at Brisbane Day in the Park with our public education trailer for all the public to see. And also, we're having our annual open house at Fire Station 91 this Saturday from 10 to 2. So if the weather gets a little warm, come on over to the fire station and cool off a little bit and see our firefighters. They have a lot to show everybody and tour the station, things like that. But again, on behalf of the North County Fire Authority, I'd just like to thank you so much for declaring Fire Prevention Week here in the City of Brisbane.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks.
And that brings us to Item C, a presentation overview of the Public Art Master Plan survey results. With us today is Park and Recreation Director Noreen Leek. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight to provide a brief update regarding our Public Art Master Plan process. The Public Art Advisory Committee and staff have been working closely with the consultant from Nine Dot Arts over the last several months. So we're going to share a little bit of information, next slide, regarding recent engagement efforts, which included workshops, community workshops, a survey, as well as meetings with staff. We'll go through the draft mission statement that was created that was an outcome of that process, and then share some next steps. To ensure a community-informed approach towards the development of the Brisbane Public Art Master Plan, public input was collected through all of those means that I just mentioned. The consultant team from Nine Dot Arts was extremely satisfied with the level of engagement, the number of respondents to the survey, and the alignment in the responses that were received through all of the varied community outreach that was conducted. Next slide, please. The information that you see on this slide is extracted directly from the survey responses. This process of engagement was essential to ensure that we are curating a vision for the future of public art in Brisbane that reflects community priorities and preferences. We know from the survey that the community wants more art, that they believe it strengthens our identity, and that we have our work cut out for us in terms of better educating the public about our process from start to finish. Participants were asked to describe Brisbane's identity using three to five characteristics, values, or themes. The responses that you see on this slide were grouped into light categories and then consolidated. In summary, the participants feel that Brisbane's identity is centered on the small-town charm, natural environment, artistic spirit, and our connected and active community. Residents want public art to reflect our community identity. Therefore, these themes should be reflected in all of Brisbane's future public art initiatives. Next slide. Using the information gathered through public engagement, the proposed mission for public art is shared here. The mission for public art in the City of Brisbane is to support community identity, unity, and pride through diverse artwork that grabs attention and distinguishes a unique sense of place. If Brisbane achieves this mission, we envision a public art program that supports the local art community, represents the values and characteristics that are significant to Brisbane, is mindful of the environment, and invites conversation and connection. The following criteria for selection of public art were also created. The first being unexpected, that artwork should promote excitement and support moments of discovery and interaction. It should be integrated and contextually grounded, connecting people to the location and to one another. It should be diverse and sourced from a pool of artists that are diverse in medium. It should be culturally rich, or what we've dubbed Brisbane Certified, and represent the values and characteristics that are significant to Brisbane's identity. It should be educational and offer new perspectives. And it should be vibrant, grabbing the attention and enriching the experience. Next slide. The consultants are actively working on the first draft of the master plan and anticipate inviting the Public Art Advisory Committee's review in November. We anticipate bringing the plan to the full council for your consideration in December or early January. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at this point.
Thank you. Are there any questions from councilmembers who are not with us in person on Zoom tonight? Seeing none from Councilmember Cunningham or from Councilmember Davis, anything from members on the dais?
Yeah, thank you, Terry. So this is great feedback, all right. So it's nice to see, you know, all the input from the community and then providing direction in this document. I'm just curious, like, what was the percentage of the population, like, or how many participants participated?
So we had 192 respondents to the survey.
Okay.
In addition to the workshop that we conducted with the Public Art Advisory Committee and a group of art advocates and stakeholders. And then the consultants were onsite at various events in July, including summer concert series, the citywide yard sale, and farmers market, engaging people actively there as well.
All right, that's fantastic.
Yeah, so they were very happy with the turnout and how enthusiastic and engaged the public was in the process.
Oh, yeah, that was my follow-up question. So, yeah, what was the consultant's response to, like, how our community gave them feedback compared to other cities?
They were overwhelmed. They're like, for such a small community, a small city, it's unique, I think, to have this level of response. And so, I mean, they often work in a lot larger cities or do projects, like, in the Denver Airport. They just don't have the same level of public engagement that they have had with the Brisbane community. So they've really enjoyed their experience to date and just have been very positive about the process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's just interesting, like, some of the things that you mentioned, you know, attention grabbing and, you know, enriching the experience and integrating, you know, other, like, different mediums, right?
Yeah.
That's really cool about our community. So it's also a nice reflection of who we are as a community, too.
Yes, that's the intention.
Exactly. All right, thank you, Nora.
Absolutely.
Any comments?
I would just say I can't wait to see the master plan. Sounds really exciting.
It is exciting.
And thank you to everybody that participated.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
And thank you, and also thank you to the subcommittee who's been working on this with the Public Art Committee. So thank you to Councilmember Davis and Cunningham.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a great evening. So that moves us to the consent calendar. And staff is pulling Consent Calendar Item G due to a request from the member of the public. And it will be re-agendizing that. Oh, I guess you're right. We have Oral Communications, number one. I put a check mark by it. Would anyone here like to speak on an item that is not on our agenda tonight? Seeing no takers. Do we have anyone online?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, I guess I sort of forgot it. I just, it just wasn't necessary tonight. Okay. So with that, we go on to Consent Calendar, which, again, staff is pulling Consent Calendar Item G due to the request from a member of the public. It'll be re-agendized at a future city council meeting. And can I get a first and a second to approve Consent Items D through F and H through K?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Sorry, unmute. Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye. Thank you. Brings us to New Business, Item L, Consider Recommendations for Use of State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. And if we can get a staff report, and that will include the memo that we received most recently. And, you know, that might be a place to kick it off with the initial memo that we just got for the public's benefit. Is that possible? Or at least the information connected to the memo?
Absolutely.
I think that's a good lead off to this discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So tonight, we're returning to you to discuss the state and local fiscal recovery funds program to provide a list of recommended projects to review, consider, and how to use the remaining funds received through the state and through this program. But in reference to a memo that was mentioned earlier, we wanted to make sure that the public was aware that in the fiscal impact section of the, of the staff report, we wanted to make a clarification. The funds that were received, we had about 800, actually 1.1 million that we received overall. And we had already used a little over 200,000, and we'll describe later, leaving us with about $890,000. That was included in the general fund budget as revenue, as a transfer in, because it's, right now, it's sitting in a separate fund. But at the time we prepared the budget, we did not include any expenses related to spending of the program. So we just wanted to make sure that you were aware, that as you're considering which projects, the list of projects that we're recommending or embarking in this discussion, that it is disclosed or transparent that if you were to use these funds for new projects, that it would add to the expenditure side of the budget for fiscal '25.
If I can clarify that a little bit into plain English. We used it to help balance the budget, and instead of being 3.5 million in, under revenue sourced, we made it where we were closer to 2.6 million going into the red. So if we decided to do any of these projects, we would go into the red further than what our budget currently states.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll let you proceed then.
Okay. So just to give a little history on the program itself. Back in 2021, and after the, in the height of COVID, President signed the American Rescue Plan Act. One of the provisions was the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, or SLFRF program, which awarded different levels of government agencies, including the City of Brisbane, funds to use towards the, to fight the pandemic, maintain public services, and build recovery for anything that was needed to use during that time. As I mentioned, the City of Brisbane received 1.1 million. We received two payments in 2021 and 2022. So in the initial release of the funds, the Treasury, the U.S. Treasury, was really targeting a lot of public health agencies, public health services, health programs and such. And trying to use this money was really beneficial to them who were really impacted. However, non-public agencies also felt the impact of COVID and the different impacts, whether it was a loss of revenue or increased expenses in targeting with their staff, personnel costs, and any other costs related to fighting the pandemic. So to the extent of the reduction of revenue, we received those funds. And we also recognized that there were businesses in the City of Brisbane that also were feeling the impact of loss of revenue. So City Council decided in 2021 to use up to $200,000 in grants to assist local small businesses that suffered those revenue losses and were not eligible for other programs that were offered through the county at the time. So after those grants were issued, plus all the costs, we were left with 890,000. So we were given the terms that we had up to five years to determine how to use the funds. So as we were not a public health agency, we were, the criteria to use those funds were a little more limited for the city. So the council at the time decided that the remaining funds would be placed on hold to be used for a future emergency economic condition if needed. And so what we did was we left those funds sitting in a separate fund, waiting until we, the city determined how to use them. We're nearing now. We're nearing now, leading to the present, we're nearing that deadline. It's, it's finally coming. So December 31st of this year, the city has to determine how we're going to obligate those remaining funds. With this known deadline, again, we included that incoming 890 as revenue on our budget as a transfer. And at the time, we were discussing the budget and council was reviewing, and it was determined that we would provide you with a list of projects to consider later on in this year. So again, several agencies were having difficult finding programs, including the City of Brisbane, on how to use the funds, which were very strict. So the government actually in 2021 and in subsequent years expanded some of the criteria. And so upon review of the various rulings, staff has interpreted the criteria of projects that our city could roll out and stay within those guidelines within the spirit of the program. In the staff report, we described the criteria that were listed for you to, that we could qualify for some of the programs. And we also included the timeline and some other information that you need to consider on how you're going to use it. Primarily, again, we have to obligate the funds by the end of this year. However, we have until the end of 2026 to actually spend those remaining funds. So if we enter into contracts later this year, it, if, if we were to put some of these projects' time on hold, they could be spent within the next couple of years. Also, it doesn't have to be one project, that could be a combination of projects, it could be a portion of a project. So there's different ways to use the funds. And then also, we're recommending that we also use some of the funds to apply towards administration costs for compliance of some of the reporting requirements, including single audits and compliance reports with the, with the U.S. government. Part of the staff report, the city staff identified seven projects that potentially qualify under the expanded use guidelines. Several of these projects have been reviewed as part of the capital improvement plan discussion reviewed last January, and some of them were totally different, and, and the list is there. We'll go through that. But at this time, we apologize that there was that omission in that fiscal impact section of the subcommittee report, and we really appreciate the opportunity to clarify that tonight through the email that was sent. So tonight, staff is requesting the council to review and consider one or several of the listed projects to be funded through SLFRF, and if there's an interest to direct staff to return such projects to council at a future meeting for further consideration, or could direct projects be moved forward if they fall within the city manager's discretion and spending limits. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions and proceed with the review and discussion of projects as the mayor and council deem appropriate.
So I, I do have a question, and I'll start it off. If we were to decide to apply this to our budget directly for financial, for solvency issues, we can do that without penalty, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question for staff at this time. Do any other members of the council have a question for staff? Colleen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just a couple clarifications, if you could, please, Carolina. So we have until December 31st of this year to earmark and obligate towards projects, but we don't have to actually complete or use that money in this fiscal year. It could be a later fiscal year.
That is correct.
Okay. Second question, the attachment A with staff recommended projects. When we last did our budget, in order to balance the budget, we put aside about 400 to 500,000 dollars of projects that we were going to put on hold until a mid-year budget review to see how our revenues were doing. Are any of those projects on this list?
No, they're not.
Okay, so these are all different projects?
Different.
So if we have the deferred projects come back, is that not going to put us further in the hole?
If those, the putting those projects on hold did not reduce the expenditure amounts at the time.
Okay.
So they're there, we were just going to use on hold if we wanted savings, correct?
Okay.
If we were to spend on these and those, it's, it's these lists of projects that would put us more in deficit, not completing what was already in the budget with those projects on hold.
Okay.
Does that?
Deferred projects?
Deferred, yeah.
The deferred projects are not in our budget, though?
Right, okay. Thank you.
No, the deferred projects were still within, we did not reduce the budget amount, we just put them on hold with opportunity if we didn't, if we wanted to push them out.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the clarification, Carolina. So, let's see, so in your, in your memo, it says that if we allocated the entire 890,000 dollars, it would grow the projected deficit from 2.7 basically to 3.6?
Yes.
Okay. And, but these are just projections?
Correct.
Right, they're not, it's not actuals?
That is correct.
So last year, you, you projected that we would be in deficit spending, and that wasn't the case. In the end, we wound up having revenues outpacing expenses.
For 2023, we did, and 2024, we're still closing the books.
Yeah, okay. And then, you know, you had shown a slide that showed previous projections, and then what the actuals were. And in that slide, every year, revenues outpaced the projections of expenses, except for one year, and that was because we got a little excited about the, the sales tax that was coming from COVID, correct?
That was one year.
One, it was just the one year, right? And so, but even then, I mean, just, even though we didn't have the revenue outpace expenses, it still didn't hurt our overall budget and the health of, the financial health of the city, correct?
The health of the city still maintained very strong, yes.
Absolutely, right. And, and, yeah, I just wanted to be clear about that with the public, that, you know, that the city's finances are extremely strong, right? And we have one of the best ratings for a small city that a small city can have, correct?
Yes.
And if I may jump in through the chair, I, I think it is important to note that there is a distinction between any one year running a deficit and fiscal health, to sort of emphasize maybe what you're, what you're saying. You know, and, and one of the obligations that Carolina and I have for the council in the, up for the next budget year is to bring back information about whether the, the deficit we have now is structural in nature, or if it's a one-time issue. And as, as the council knows, we're working on a variety of potential revenue resources that we bring forward, either packaged as part of the budget or before that. I have no evidence right now that it's a structural deficit, but we'll, we'll know more later in the year.
Sure.
Next year. But it is important to note that we are in very strong position fiscally.
Great, thank you. And, and then, Carolina, the, this list of items that we could spend money on, they're on here because they, they meet a certain criteria, correct?
Correct.
Whereas other things that we're, you know, that we put on hold, they wouldn't reach the criteria. Is that the reason why that some of those items are not on this list?
Those items were already budgeted, so we didn't need to apply them to here.
But they could have.
They could have.
Okay. All right, all right.
And through the chair, I would also add that there, there could be some CIP-type projects that because of lead times, because of what you kind of need to do upfront, we wouldn't meet the, we would, we may not meet some of those deadlines. So the list that was created was to try to cut those, narrow that and cut those out.
Mm-hmm, that, that makes sense, too. Okay, so, you know, I'm looking at one of the items, and we received an email from a constituent. It's item number four, it's a Crocker Trail SEQA.
I'm sorry, may I make interruption, just through the chair, is, if, are we still in questions or are we in discussion?
I know.
Okay.
Yeah, so I just, sorry, yeah, so the question is, let's see, so, so in order to implement the master plan for the Crocker Park Trail master plan, the SEQA requirements need to be finalized in order to do that? Okay, I see a nod, yes. Okay. And, and then in order to get grants that might help provide amenities for the Crocker Park Trail, you need to have the SEQA finished so that then the master trail plan can be finalized?
Correct. And I, and I appreciate that Maureen is here, because she's working closer with this project.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. That's it. Thank, thank, thank you. Oh, you know, I do have this, you know what, that, that's it for now.
Okay.
I'll wait for public comment.
Okay, Karen, do you have any questions for staff? Okay, and Madison? No. Okay, then I will move on to public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one in the audience raising their hands and having no slips, do we have anyone online?
We have Michael.
Please, please go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Michael Barnes, I'm a Brisbane resident. I read the staff report with interest for the Crocker Trail SEQA plan, but I find it, I find it very distressing that at 1:00 this afternoon, the staff came out with a new memo saying that this 890,000 dollars is part of your general fund, and if you spend any of it, it increases your deficit. I, I think this is a little bit amateur. I'm, I'm trying to be an engaged member of the public. I've read your staff report, I have a point of view. Crocker Trail SEQA, it seems like a great way to spend some of this money, but I suspect you're just going to take all of this money and put it toward deficit. So when the public takes the time to read your staff report, understand it, come to the meeting and try to testify, and the rug is pulled out from beneath them, it is a, it makes you guys not so credible, and it's really a waste of my time, and it's why you probably don't have many members of the public participating, because you can't run your processes straight. So hopefully, the Crocker Trail SEQA is eventually done before you guys get off the council, although I doubt it, since it's been years since you approved it. But I think it's important that Brisbane provide active recreation for its active community, and that would be things like, like exercise stations out at Sierra Point, maybe fixing the decrepit nature of the bicycle paths out there, putting in some bicycle skills features, and, and improving this town, instead of, I don't know, whatever you're going to do with the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public online that would like to speak?
I see no hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment and go into discussion. Cliff, do you want to kick us off?
Sure, sure. You know, I think there's a few items here that would be appropriate for the council to move forward on. Yes, it would add to the projected deficit, but our financial health is strong. You know, year after year, we have these projections, and we always seem to come out on the black, or in the black. You know, I'm going to be just open with the public about the SEQA requirements for the Crocker Park Trail. I assumed that that was part of the package of giving staff direction to move forward with the master plan. You know, the reason, you know, I know that former councilmember Barnes had come before us plenty of times saying, hey, how come you're not doing this? I just thought it was just taking time. I didn't know that we had not funded it. And when I, when I look at this, it, it is an embarrassment for us, right? Because we know that, you know, we spent money to do the master plan, we took in public input, right? And, and, and then we don't finalize that? That, that is an embarrassment on us, and we should just, you know, own up to it. So I, I just want to apologize. But I, I hope that we can move forward tonight and give staff direction to spend the 150,000 dollars. We can't get any grant money unless the plan is finalized, right? Respecting our public to, you know, have them give us input, you know, we're going to be requesting input from them for the B of A site. You know, if we say, hey, you know, give us your input, thank you very much, well, that's not sincere. And I think this is a good gesture on our part to do it. And then the other part is the Mission Blue Center renovations. You know, I'm just highlighting, you know, include kitchen overhaul? Come on, we got to do that. That's important. And it's 45,000 dollars. This is 195,000 bucks for these two items, and it will not put a dent in the financial strength of, of, of the city. And chances are, in the end, we'll probably be okay at the end of the fiscal year, like we usually are. So I would say let's, let's earmark these two for funding, using these funds, give staff that direction.
Thank you. Karen?
Excuse me, a mouse I'm not used to over here. I would say that we, we should be finishing up with the Crocker Trail. If that is finished and we can move forward, we're looking for funding for other things on the Crocker Park Trail. That would also include grants from the ARP as well, so we could put benches or whatever else we need to, to make the Crocker Park Trail accessible, not just for cyclists, but for everybody. So I would agree with that. And also, the Mission Blue Center renovations are at D, of course. The, the AV in the, in our room, that's, that's a big one. We may need to look for funds somewhere else for that. I don't know if we can. Excuse me. And item, item two, very interesting conversations have come forth about what we're doing on Bay Shore, and I think some public outreach and education as to why the idea of these long-term improvements on San Bruno are necessary are, you know, 20 years ago, 20-something years ago, when I moved to Brisbane, we didn't even have a stop sign at the entrance to town. And now we have through traffic, 90% of which does not originate nor terminate in Brisbane, doing upwards of 70 miles an hour along Bay Shore. So short of the state stepping in and stopping that traffic somehow, we really need to be thinking about that as well. So I'd throw that in there somewhere, even if it's partial funds, as Carolina said, could go towards that, I would support that.
Thank you. Madison?
I am in agreement with hoping Karen, I would like to see a fund SEQA for the Crocker Trail. I think the longer we go, it'll necessitate us doing the process all over again. I mean, after it's been a certain amount of years, you know, like, I feel like you need to solicitate feedback, or solicit feedback all over again. So also, I think, you know, if we do that, those expenses may be offset by grants anyway. So it's kind of at a standstill, and we have an opportunity to use funds here for that right now and just take care of it so we can move forward. I feel like it's kind of a loose end. We started a whole process. It's like, you know, us doing the public art master plan and then just half the fizzling out. So I, I think we just need to finish what we started. And then I- And then I, you know, ever since I was on the Park and Rec Commission, I've wanted to see some really critical enhancements happen at Mission Blue and that $45,000 just covers your planning for that. It doesn't even cover the renovations, but I think if we can at least get some sort of design squared away, we can improve the facility and get more rentals and there's a lot that we need to do just with the exterior degrading. This is something that the longer we put off, the more it's going to cost us. So I would say if we could at least just get the design figured out and if at some point we do pass impact fees, we can hit the ground running with the money from the impact fees to apply to these renovations. So I would support those two items.
Colleen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe the Mission Blue renovations, there are some critical things that need to be addressed there. So that's an easy $45,000. Crocker Trail, if we can't get any of the grants without sequa, it just, it needs to go forward. That's $150,000. The audio in this room, if we cannot transmit the meetings, we've crippled the public's ability to know what's going on. I think that's a huge priority. $300,000, that leaves us $395,000 that I would apply to the San Bruno Bay Shore long-term improvements because since I've been on the council almost four years now, I constantly hear, what are you going to do about all the excessive speeding on Bay Shore? The kids are walking to school next to the road with cars going 60 miles an hour. There's no sidewalk. Bicycleists feel like they're going to get hit. That, we're applying for a grant and we don't know what the matching requirement might be, but $395,000 would certainly be a good earmark towards that. Thank you.
I guess it's up to me to be the naysayer. It's money we've already budgeted. It's money we don't have. If we want to look at funding projects, in my opinion, we should wait till we have a mid-year budget review before we go spending money like water. And yes, these are smaller projects. They can be done quickly, but they aren't necessary other than perhaps the one nobody mentioned, the water meters, that's actually going to have long-term benefits for the city. And I'm sorry, Mission Blue, yes, we should upkeep the building. We can't put in a kitchen in there. We can't put a commercial kitchen in that building. It would cost us a fortune. It would cost us thousands a month to maintain what you need to do for a commercial kitchen. I'm involved out at the Sierra Point Yacht Club. I see the expenses on being of what it costs to put a fire suppression system for a kitchen, for a stove. All it is is one stove and you need to put in fire suppression. You need to have that certified every year. You have to have it checked every 30 days. You have to do so much more than you could get by increasing the rent on the once-a-month or even once-a-week wedding, but you're not going to have that rate of return on a kitchen in that building. If we want to look at what it's going to take to maintain the building, great. I don't think we need to be repurposing it. It's meant as a studio space, as a rehearsal, as a dance, as a performance space. And I think that it is adequate for that. Certainly, the kitchen could use an update. It doesn't need a $45,000 redesign. We need to decide what needs to be done to fix it up. But personally, I can't see spending money that we've already put into our budget that we know were in the hole by 2.7 million and spending this money when we don't have to. And so that's my comment. I know that it makes me the naysayer and not giving all the shiny bright things that the community may want, but I think it's being a realist. And I'll leave it there and see if somebody wants to make a motion to do something else.
Madam Mayor?
Of course.
So when I gave my opinion of how this money could be allocated, I wasn't suggesting that we necessarily move forward. We have to determine the allocations by December 31st. We can choose to move forward on one, two, all, or none and put them into the next budget cycle so long as we earmark what they're for. So I concur with you that because this will create even worse deficit, we don't have to give the green light to move them all forward, but we need to earmark what we're assigning them to.
We could earmark the money for our deficit and do this when we have a budget review and know where we are.
When are we having that budget review?
Budget review will be after the deadline, unfortunately, so.
But it would, but it would, we could earmark the money to go towards our deficit.
That is correct.
And.
But the.
And then it's spent and we don't have to worry about a deadline.
That is one of your options, yes.
And then we look at it in six months and see if these projects we want to do.
And.
I have a question for staff. So Carolina, you know, one of the items that Colleen mentioned was number two and the San Bruno Bay Shore long-term improvement, right? If we put, I get $890 and it says three, that's five. So basically $390,000, right? So that, you know, we could earmark it for that, but the thing is, you know, it is not, it's not an expenditure unless you, you use that money to spend it, right? If it just stays, then it just carries over into the next budget cycle, correct?
Once we obligate the city, it becomes a commitment that restricts for two years, up to two years, restricting our reserves, but it impacts as an expenditure on the budget when we use it.
Okay, so, okay, I, you know, that, thank you for clarifying that because I was thinking of perhaps, yeah, maybe we would, we would do that, but it sounds like there's some restrictions there and maybe we don't want to do that. Like, I'm inclined to move forward with a motion for the Crocker Trail Sequa and for the Mission Blue Center renovations.
Just want to clarify, number five, it's the design.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Madison, you know, clearly identified, yeah, what that money is for so we can hit the ground running, right? And that's, that's what I mean, so that perhaps when we, you know, implement impact fees, maybe we start to get some money or maybe the, our budget picture is a little bit rosier than what we might have anticipated. And there are these additional funds and then the council as a, as a group decides to move forward and who knows what the kitchen plans are going to be? That's not for us to decide tonight. What is important is to move forward with some kind of plan. And so I would be inclined to move forward with four and five, so that would be my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'd just like a clarification. The sequa for the Crocker Park Trail, that is still not able to be decided if it fits under this financing, isn't that correct for the staff report?
Oh, as far as the restrictions?
Yes.
There's still a little, some clarification that would be needed, but we're hoping with the guidance today, if you so choose to move forward, then we can finalize that piece before the deadline.
And would it make any difference if we used that $150,000 towards the budget to balance our budget and earmarked a different $150,000 that didn't have restrictions? Would that action be any different from what we're taking now?
Only that, again, these are funds that are available that we could bring in to use for these projects. I don't know if that answers your question.
Okay, well, there's been a first and a second, so we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lent?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
No.
And Mayor O'Connell?
No.
Motion passes.
So, thank you. And that moves us to City Manager's report on upcoming activities.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I probably do not need to say this, but this weekend is Day in the Park. And just to remind people of the exciting opportunities at the event. There's going to be a derby in the morning. We got live music in the afternoon, 40 vendors, interactive art feature, and I voted sticker contest that the Youth Advisory Committee and the City Clerk's Office is cosponsoring and many other things. I'll be in a booth, too, so I hope people come by and say hello to me.
In the dunk booth? We've had that before and actually I remember Councilmember Lentz in the dunk booth.
At the staff meeting, at the department head meeting yesterday, that came up as an option, yes.
Okay.
We also have the Star City San Bruno Half Marathon and 5K. I hope everyone stays as cool as they possibly can out there. It's going to be a great race. And as you heard earlier from the Fire Marshal, it's a fire service day, so the fire station, Fire Station 81 will be open. I also wanted to put into the record per yesterday's announcement from staff that the EIR for the quarry is imminently coming for release. anticipate that very soon, so we hope people will participate in the comment process for that and we'll have some robust communication, including what is an EIR and what are you supposed to do with it and things of that nature, so people can know how they can be part of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Moves us on to countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. I have none for subcommittees. Does anyone have any county meetings? Colleen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Peninsula Clean Energy meeting from the 26th of September announced that as of calendar year 2024, PCE customers have saved in the entire service area $27 million in electricity costs. That savings is compared to PG&E and what they charge. And in Brisbane, 97.8% of residents are PCE customers. The year-to-date savings for all of those PCE customers is already $567,837 compared to PG&E rates. PG&E did lower some rates in July. PCE customers are still receiving 5% savings compared to PG&E. And you may have heard about Caltrain ditching all the polluting diesel trains. They're now running new electric locomotives using clean energy. They announced this the other day. This will cut 250,000 metric tons of CO2 emissions. And what does that mean in the real world? That's so conceptual. It's like removing 55,000 cars from the road, which is huge. And PCE is really very proud to be the supplier of electricity for those trains. And it's a, it's a great show of commitment to Peninsula Clean Energy, which is the county community-owned, not-for-profit electricity provider. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen, do you have any reports?
No, I do not.
And Madison? So I attended the SFO Community Noise Roundtable last night. We had a wonderful speaker, Mr. Peter Kirsch, who is a nationally recognized noise attorney. One of the big takeaways I have, which is really quite urgent that we get a handle on, is the need to put land use restrictions and regulations, and I shouldn't say restrictions, regulations, in place to limit drone and vertiports for the EVTOL electric, or excuse me, vertical electric takeoff and landing vehicles. There are going to be little helicopters for the rich and famous and, you know, ultimately perhaps delivering medical supplies, packages, your Amazon purchases. One of the things that Peter, Mr. Kirsch has seen is companies coming in speculatively and buying up property so that they can put in vertiports. And some of the more savvy cities that he is working with are already putting in land use restrictions and zoning so that they are not the drone hub of the Bay Area. It's really important to get that in before the, it's the Wild West out there. And so we need to get those restrictions or those regulations in place and perhaps even fee schedules for where we do want them. Some cities are looking at limiting them to roadways. So if the drones are going to be flying through Brisbane, they have to fly along roadways. That in the future may not be legal because the FAA may override us. They're going to have to be low because they have to stay out of federal airspace. And because it's a high-pitched, lower decibel but higher pitched, it's like the mosquito flying at night. You hear it in your room even though it's not loud. So it's something that I think that as a council member, I think it would really behoove us to, in the future, get a subcommittee or get this over to planning to look at where those kinds of uses could be tolerated or not tolerated in our city. But I think that it was really brought home that it needs to be done as quickly as we can. So that's my takeaway and hopefully we can move forward with direction with staff on that at a future date. And that's it for mine. Written communications. Hello, baby.
Yeah.
Written communications.
Council received communication from Folean regarding Agenda Item L.
Thank you. And oral communications, number two. Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak on an item that was not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none and no one online. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we have a hand raised from CMF.
Okay, please, go ahead.
I just want to quickly offer a compensating public comment for the one that came earlier and express my appreciation for the work of this council and for the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, congratulations to Councilmember Davis for the new addition. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:35 PM. Thank you all for coming. I know.